All right, good evening, everybody. It is, I guess it's 5:59, so maybe we could, we could wait a couple of seconds here for six o'clock to roll around. In case we have any extra stragglers. I want to listen to our Public Works Agenda items for the evening. All right, it says 6:00 PM on my phone, so we can get this, this meeting of the Public Works Committee together. Are all trustees accounted and present? Except for myself.
Trustees McGovern and Kudo are present.
Fantastic. All right, has this meeting been publicly noted?
Yes.
Great, okay, so we have two agenda items tonight. The first agenda item is to consider Ordinance 3064, solid waste code updates. Is LeAnn Bushlick available to run us through this topic?
I can certainly do that, thank you. Essentially, this is a housekeeping item. There were a few code items that staff believed required update, which were discovered during the development of a pollution prevention program related to leaf collection and grass clippings that is, was required for submission earlier this year under our municipal separate stormwater permit. It was noted that the code made exceptions for the collection of grass clippings, which at one time was a practice, but for years, we have been collecting grass clippings with yard waste, and in fact, we are now required to do so. So we took this opportunity to clean up a few other items in the code. Specifically, clarifying some references to residential refuse service being defined as provided to one, two, and three family dwellings. That, that was noted in the definition section, but it was not clear, staff believes, in the actual code language. So the definition was inserted in the, within the context of the code, just to make that clarification. We clarified location of special collection service points as being in the parkway or on the alley, but not on private property. That just codifies practice for as long as I'm aware of the service offered. That's only been done on public property. We removed references to the collection of household hazards waste. We do not do that, we are not licensed to do that. That service is provided by MMSD, so that language was stricken from the code. And then there are multiple instances of modernization of pronoun language. Specifically, references to the Director of Public Works and his designee were changed to the Director of Public Works and their designee. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I thought you were finished, sorry, LeAnn.
So, so the ordinance was prepared in consultation with Attorney Bear. We're just asking this evening for your recommendation to the board, so that it can be considered at that level at the first September meeting.
Fantastic, thank you. I love a good code cleanup, and it looks like you guys have really, you know, dug in deep and within these two ordinance sort of updates. So really appreciate that kind of deep dive and the work you guys put into this. Trustees Kudo or McGovern, do you have any questions or thoughts or concerns?
No, I think the red lines look good.
Yep. Yeah.
Fantastic, would somebody like to make a motion?
Page.
So I could just, I move that Ordinance 3064 be recommended to the Village Board for approval.
Trustee Kudo will second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance updates pass. Next on the agenda, we have Consider Ordinance 3065 and ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 466 of the Municipal Code of the Village of Shorewood.
Thank you. Yes, thanks. Also, really a housekeeping item. We, we referenced this, I believe it was in May, we had a board discussion about the Emerald Ashbore Management Program and how we would proceed. And during the course of that discussion, we reviewed some recommendations from an earlier consultant report. One of those recommendations being an update to the code. The, the section of our code that deals with forestry, at the time that Dutch Elm disease, sorry, was becoming prevalent, the code, there was a code section that was drafted to address that particular issue. Approximately 15 years or so ago, when Emerald Ashbore started to become an issue, we essentially copied and then modified a code section and created that to, to deal with Emerald Ashbore. Recommendation is rather than addressing specific diseases as they happen to occur, it would be cleaner and easier for everyone if we just had a code section that generally addressed any pests or diseases that might impact the urban forest. So in this particular instance, what we determined would be the easiest and the cleanest was simply to strike the entire section and then rewrite it using the Arbor Day Foundation's National Model Ordinance to create language that was a bit more generic in terms of forestry pests or diseases. I think we did take the opportunity to clarify a number of things, very similar to we, the way we did it with solid waste. Pronoun references specifically. We also clarified, spelled out a bit items related to damage to public trees, which wasn't specifically addressed in here, giving some examples. We will typically, on an annual basis, find people affixing sap buckets, hammocks, zip lines, you name it, to trees in the, in the parkway, which for various reasons aren't great ideas. That was never specifically spelled out in the code, but it was referenced. Here we give some examples and make it clear that those types of items aren't permitted on public street trees. Primarily for safety reasons, but also for the health of those trees, so. Again, primarily a housekeeping item doesn't really add anything or change anything that hadn't been here before. We believe it just makes it much easier for the public to understand.
I appreciate that, thank you, LeAnn. Trustees Kudo or McGovern, do you have any questions?
I have, I have no questions.
Nope.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move that Ordinance 3065 be recommended to the Village Board for approval.
I second.
Though, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, motion passes. Thank you, thank you, LeAnn, for, for all your time and energy put into these updates. We really appreciate it and always love the cleanups. So with that, I would, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
Thank you, everybody, this meeting has been adjourned. Do, what do, what do we have next as our group? Do we have a group specific meeting here?
JPNL is at 6:30. Budget and Finance is at 7:00, and then Regular Board at 7:30.
JPNL at 6:30, and then, okay, fantastic. All right, everybody, really appreciate it, we'll see you, we'll see you all in, in a little while.
Sounds good, thanks, Arthur.
No, he's not on JPNL.
Is JPNL the same as Budget and Finance?
Yeah, no.
That'd be Kathy.
Are you on JPNL?
No, I'm just.
Right.
Then, no, it'd be.
It's Arndorfer and Kathy.
And Jerry.
And Jerry, yep, yep.
Hi, Jerry, hi, Arthur, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yep, I can.
He said yes.
Yes, for Arthur.
Is this the room that we're going to use, or the Zoom call that we're going to use for JPNL?
Yeah, are you on JPNL? Kathy, Kathy's not on JPNL. So must be Arthur.
So we have trustee Lynn and trustee Ursink, and you both are on JPNL, correct?
I am not.
I, no, I, I, I am still, I'm the Chair of JPNL, right now.
Trustee Ursink is not.
Okay, Jerry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Perfect, your sound is now coming through, thank you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I should be the Chair of JPNL.
You are. Thank you. Is Arthur on JPNL with you?
Uh, no.
No, I am not, can you guys hear me, or no?
You can hear you, Arthur, thank you. Who's on JPNL with you, Jerry?
Kathy and Jim.
Kathy and Jim, yeah.
I'm gonna need you to log in.
Is that what she knew?
I know there was, there was a lot of confusion, and I, I have to leave after JPNL, but we want to get this one kind of done because of the personnel matters.
Sure. Trustee Kudo, we are, we have the pleasure of having him in the audience tonight, as he's between meetings, and he called trustee Stokbrand, so she, you should be logging in shortly.
Thank you.
She comes on, then we will have a quorum, and we can begin. Thanks for joining us, Jerry.
No, thank you, thanks for accommodating.
Hey, Becky, your mic isn't really low.
Oh, it is, okay.
Toya, a moment ago, I couldn't hear you, you may not have had your microphone in front of you, though.
I didn't.
Sorry, go one more time.
Can you hear me now?
Little better, still pretty soft.
How about now?
Little better.
How about me?
You're loud and clear, Toya.
Thank you.
Okay, what mic number are you, I'll try to match your percentage.
I'm on 90.
She should be six.
96%. Oh, I don't know.
She's mic number six, you should be mic number four, Becky.
You're number four, Becky. No.
Oh, yeah, it says that right in my mic.
I haven't looked down at that in a while. You're really number seven, but you're in number eight's place.
There we go. I think that's her there. Looks like she might just be adjusting her audio.
Becky, on the far right, there should be the master volume, what is it, what's that level at?
It's at 47%.
Do we typically have it that low?
Yes.
Okay, copy, copy.
Yeah, I'll turn it up a little, but sometimes we get some feedback.
Is Arndorfer appearing? No.
That's why we don't turn it up that loud. Trustee Stokbrand, are you on? No, you cannot. So, he is muted, I'm trying to ask her to unmute. Mute. Maybe she'll make it up.
Okay. Trustees Stokbrand, are you able to hear us?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry for my late arrival.
No, no, no problem, thank you for being accommodating. I think we're gonna jump into the Judiciary Personnel Licensing Meeting at 6:41. And unless there's any objection here, I think we can just jump right into the items. Item number one is Consider Committee Membership Removal Per Policy 33. I know we had a little history via email today, so thank you for that. Was there anything else that we should be aware of, or here at this time?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Trustees Stokbrand, did you have any questions about the removal at this time?
No, I didn't, thank you.
Neither do I, I do believe we have a motion in the packet on page.
I do have a question, so then do we have enough, when they need to meet, do we have? Do we have someone that we're adding? To meet state law, when they have to meet, right?
Correct, yes, and we need.
Yeah, that is item number two.
Okay, right.
Actually, it's not item number two.
Oh, no, that's designed, I'm sorry, you're, thank you, Toya, sorry.
I wasn't sure about the appointment process, manager Ewald. I did have a member that agreed to come on so that we could establish quorum, but because I believe the procedure is for the president to appoint, I didn't put it in the packet, the person's name. But I wasn't sure how to proceed with that part.
The President, President McKay appointing a new member is in the motion as well, so that is part of that ask.
Okay, then I am prepared to make a motion.
Okay, thank you, it should be on page 15.
I move to recommend that the Village Board remove Nacidia Johnson and Eugene Groisman from the Board of Review Committee roster, and that President McKay appoint members with the Village Board approval.
All right, I'll second that, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 2-0. Thank you for that. And we'll jump to the second item, Consider Appointments to the, this is ultimately to the Design Review Board and Parks and Public Spaces Committee. And we have two people who have been recommended for those spots as well. Bob Miller to the Design Review Board and Rainey Perro to the Parks and Public Spaces Committee.
I have a motion if you're ready.
I am ready, thank you.
And I just would like to thank people for, the residents for volunteering, and I move to recommend the appointments as slated to the full Village Board for approval.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries again. And I second that comment as well, thank you for time, talent, and service to the community. And item number three, Consider the 2024 to 2025 Class B and Class B Alcohol Licenses for Nana Sushi, 4511 North Oakland Avenue. And is there anything we should know about this? I know we talked about this a little bit. The potential of this coming to us about a month ago, and so I'm glad to see that it's here, but were there, were there any questions or insight that we should have?
Should you have any questions, the owner is here to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Kathy, did you? I do not, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, same, same here, this looks very straightforward, I'm happy to see this come into fruition.
Okay, then, I, with your permission, trustee Lynn, I move to recommend Nana Sushi located at 4511 North Oakland Avenue, Shorewood, Wisconsin, 53211, to be considered at the August 5, 2024, meeting of the full Village Board for approval consideration.
And I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that carries as well, thank you, trustee Stokbrand for making the motion. Any other follow-up questions, otherwise we can, this went pretty quick, we can do a quick adjournment.
I have none, and in that case, I would, with your permission, move to adjourn.
Second, thank you, so we will adjourn today at 6:46 PM. Thank you for jumping on, and thank you, everyone.
Well, I apologize again, I'm sorry for my.
No, 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 thank, thank you for making it, and, and I'm sorry, there's a lot of confusion this weekend. I appreciate you being accommodating to me as well, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. At 7:30 PM, I'm trustee Eric Kudo sitting in for the first 15 or so minutes for President McKay, who is on her way. He'll be sitting in his chair, Rebecca has this meeting. Has this meeting been notified?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Okay, for attendees, I have trustee McGovern, trustee Stokbrand, trustee Ursink on, online, trustee Ursink, are you there?
I am, yep, sorry, I'm here.
Okay. And then myself. Pardon me, then I have myself, so we have quorum, so we can continue. The First Order of Business is the Special Order of Business, item number four, the Long Range Plan Presentation, manager Ewald, you lead us off, please.
Like to introduce Christina Dolber and Dave Hickey, who we are working with from Lauterbach and Amen, they're serving in the capacity as Finance Director for the Village of Shorewood. And we've spent a lot of hours together in the last two weeks, and I'm very grateful for the partnership that we have and the time that we've put into the LRP that's before you this evening. Christina is going to provide the overview of that plan, entertain questions from the board, and when that has concluded, then we'll move on to item 4B, which is the 2025 Operational Budget Forecast.
Thank you very much. And she's still smiling, even though we've been staring at this together for a few weeks, and so am I. I just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview, and I know that the Long Range Financial Plan, as well as my budget forecast is before you, but just as a little bit of a refresher for what, how we use this, financial cycles at the village have historically begun with this long-range plan. So although many things about this 2025 budget process, as you will review in my summary, as well as the details in the Long Range Financial Plan, are going to be very different than the past, we can still seek a little bit of comfort in recognized beginnings since we've begun our budget process each year with this long-range plan. We have founded a great tool to analyze a real bird's eye view of the financial roadways that we are seeing intersect at the village currently for the 2025 budget process. And the new theme for this year is basically a new normal. So generally, the village is standing before what I would call a logistical and financial intersection in which services that are currently being offered, as well as required infrastructure improvements and ongoing maintenance, must be carefully positioned to achieve its goals. Things like future unfunded mandates, aging infrastructure, debt interest increases, and the previous fund balance that was available, that was being utilized as debt stabilization, is now depleted, as well as inflation costs increasing over the past few years. All of these have kind of culminated into a new normal for us, that we've got to take a look at in a more strategic overall picture to take a look at how our costs and the possible financing can line up in these projections and the overall outlook for the village. So the Long Range Plan itself has various components to it. One part of it is the debt service, which begins on page three. So after the overview, we typically, in the past, would start the Long Range Financial Plan projections by looking at our debt service. And if you compare this on page three to prior year presentations, what you would have seen is an additional presentation related to what was titled previously as the debt stabilization amount. This was liquidated in 2024 as part of the budget process, and is no longer available. It was related to previous fund balance that was available from previous years that was planned to be spent down in order to help keep the debt service lower for the village. And that's why it was titled debt stabilization. Those funds have now been used up, so it's one of the pieces that is no longer available from the inflow or the financing piece that we need for our budget process. So on page three, you can see, we now have just our overall debt service projections. And the key part here is that one of the available financing roadways that we're looking at, basically culminating in this budget process for the 2025 outlook for the village, is how our debt service is going to look over the future years. This presentation shows us not just the existing debt service that we have outstanding, but future debt, which is from the costs related to the Long Range Plan, for which the details are in Appendix A. And you'll see we pull all of those costs together in the expenditures for the fund level as well, but you can see it in totality here for the amount that we expect to finance through future debt service, based on projections. Now, staff has worked with the village's advisor when the village works to issue debt. We have reached out to that advisor and received projections for these future debt service lines. And we're currently projecting interest at a conservative level, 5% for all of our projections. The following presentation on page four for debt capacity shows you just kind of a nice snapshot of what the debt looked like from 2018 going into 2034, so you can see the ebb and flow of what would be financed for general projects, and how that's allocated out to utility projects. And as you can see, the tid falls off once all of your tids are projected to close in the future as well. So as a summary, debt service is just one of the roadways that's leading into this overall summary for for your plan. The second area of the Long Range Plan is the property tax levy. And this is a really important piece of the plan, because in the past, historically, the village has used and maintained a level 2%. the village has used and maintained a level 2% increase of property tax increases over the years. With some of the things that I've mentioned, and I'll continue to review in the budget outlook, a lot of these occurrences, costs, projects are happening and hitting us all at once at the same time as we're losing some of these previously available resources and interest and inflation is also an issue. And as a result, our presentation, then if you look at the overall levy impact on page seven of the long-range plan, is that presenting 2% increases over the following future periods would result overall in a shortfall in the budget process. So if you direct your attention to line 17, you will see that over a period of four years, starting in 2025 and ending in 2028, we have a decrease overall in our operating and capital levy that would be available. Those numbers are negative because overall, it's a projected deficit over that four-year period of about $2 million.
Christina, I just want to pause for a moment. I know that I see a hand raised by one of the online participants. Just wanted to remind everyone that we're going to get, go through the extent of the presentation, and then, like we will with every other item on the agenda, we're going to give the board members an opportunity to ask questions, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Thank you for that update. So directing your attention back to page seven, on line 17, between years 2025 through 2028, highlighted in orange, you will see those four line items. Starting in 2025, added together, add up to about a $2 million projected deficit if we keep 2% increases in our property tax levy maintained as in the past. So again, this is just one part of the overall larger picture of the process for our budget and our long-range planning. And at this time, it's just a projection as well. So if we keep everything at 2%, if you look at the very bottom, it shows you how things would pan out at that level for your property tax levies over the period of time as well. So as you can see, if everything holds steady at 2%, in 2027, we're going to have to see some shifts to the budget if we don't take care of them before then as part of the tax levy process. Moving on, since the levy directly affects the revenues that we can project, as well as the expenditures that we can project to cover with those revenues, the presentation on page eight shows you what our projections would be for the immediate future. So in 2025, our projections are shown at a 4% increase in expenditures. And then we level that back out at 3% increases following 2025. And it shows an increase in the levy of 2%. So as I noted previously briefly, if we keep the levy increase at 2%, the same as in prior years, and we have an assumption that we'll have 4% increases in expenditures, we will have a projected prospective funding gap for the 2025 budget of $700,000 approximately. So where is this gap coming from? Well, there's a few costs that we are including as part of our long-range financial plan, including, of course, the cost of maintaining all of our capital projects and infrastructure. So the village maintains more than $7 million in vehicles, equipment, and all sorts of other infrastructure on a annual basis. And as part of our annual budget process, we project how much we want to add to those vehicles, equipment, and other capital assets, as well as what it will cost to maintain those assets. In the following presentation on page 10, we show projections for what the typical costs would be for infrastructure. But they also include not just our capital assets in place, but on page 10, we are also showing all of our long-range planning costs. So this presentation allows you to see all of our projects and planned costs in one place projected out for the future 10 years. And if you'll direct your attention to the lines shown as bond proceeds and reserves and the infrastructure expenses, you'll see they align because whatever we're planning to finance as part of our long-range plan, we're currently financing through bond issuances. So that's where the debt service presentation that I previously went over comes in. So our method is to estimate the costs, project it out over 10 years, and then look at the financing that we have available to cover those costs. So as all of those villages, village projects that are outlined in Appendix A roll up into page 10, the financing is planned with debt issuances for those projects. And in year 2027, the reason why that jumps up so largely is because the Public Works facility is by far going to be our largest planned expenditure over this next 10-year period. Of course, the other projects that we have that are ongoing are not, not less significant or less monetarily large. But of course, that $24 million there in 2027 is mostly related to that Public Works facility that we have planned. So following that presentation, we can see the village has some tax increment financing that we've been successful in the past using as an avenue through which to finance our projects and improvements. Most recently, TID 5 was utilized to fund Oakland Avenue North, and that is on page 13. The last piece of the overall long-range planning presents the village's utilities. So the, the, the projects that we went over that would be financed mainly by bond issuances on page 10 as a summary, those are mainly related to the components of the projects that get allocated to the village. The remainder of the projects are getting allocated to the village's utilities, and some portion of those projects can then be financed by user, user charges rather than through bond issuances. And as a result, that's why utilities function differently in the government environment. Utilities that the village has are predominantly the parking, water, and sewer utilities. And they're reported as enterprise funds by the village to show the setting aside of specific charges for covering those services and those costs. So we have a parking utility that was set up to cover the cost of maintaining the roadway or maintaining the parking lot and making sure that we keep it clean and free of snow and ice. And that parking utility doesn't currently have any significant projects. If you look at page 15, projected out. However, we do have some resources on hand that, there's an estimate in here, but we're projecting a more conservative estimate of about $475,000 available at the end of the fiscal year for 2024 that may be available if the village so chooses to take a look at closing its parking utility or moving away from that in, to utilize it separately as a parking utility to finance the parking lot. The other two utilities, the water utility and the sewer utility, are a little bit different because the water utility specifically is rate regulated by the PSC. So at our previous board meeting, we had City Water explain the financial projections that we have on pages 16 and 17 for the water utility itself. And we are going to work with them on a rate case that will project out the expenses in the future with the intent of having the PSC approve an increase in our rates to cover the planned projects. Following that presentation is the sewer utility, which also shows a projected projects that get allocated out between water and sewer. And the sewer utility specifically, we are projecting an 8% increase for the 2025 budget in order to ensure that we have enough revenues to cover the bond covenants that are in place for the revenue bonds related to the projects in that fund. And so if we move on to pages 20 and 21 and compare the utility rate increases that we are projecting and what the effect would be on rate payers, you can see that on page 21. And on page 20, you can see where Shorewood falls in line with our costs for water sewer related to the communities in the North Shore area. Those are the main components of the long-range plan. And if, if you wish to look at the details, the main financial component is on page 24, which then, as I mentioned, pulls up into all of the data that we are projecting out in the long-range plan itself. The project timelines on page 24 are currently as they stand and as they've been projected out. But as we will see in my 2025 budget overview, there are some projects that are fixed in place and some that we are currently still in the works as far as timing and what the future looks like. So as we embark upon this new path ahead and figure out how to navigate out of the, the curvy roads that we have at the village currently for our finances, there's a lot of different possible levers that we could be pulling to totally change our landscape. We have lots of options, and we'll go over some of those during the budget overview. But I know that, as Rebecca mentioned, there are people with questions, so I'd love to take those first before we move on to that.
So I had relayed before that we're going to conclude the presentation, allow trustees, like we do for all items, to allow trustees to ask questions and then open it up to the public if there were any questions. Trustee Kudo.
I think it goes to Chair and the President. I think it just happens when you walk in.
Okay. Comments and questions from the trustees? Yeah, sorry.
Questions from trustees? Trustee Stokebrand?
Thank you for all of your work on this. I appreciate it. I'm just going to kind of start back where I first made some notes. So the, on page three, the projected debt service, line number three goes to 9 million. Are these cumulative numbers, or is this the debt we would add every year?
Line one is your existing debt, and then two is the future debt as projected to be added each year.
And so then, number three would be the total?
That's right.
But does this include, for example, oh, okay, did, okay. And so on the average home, based on the $340,000 assessed value, which I believe was the median in 2021, just the debt portion would jump from currently $530 to 1800?
Between 2025 and 2028, that's correct.
And so this is assuming that we stick with the long-range financial plan that we have. What, I guess I'm wondering, because we talk a little bit about unfunded mandates, and it seems like the DNR, we're really expecting them to come up with something for us. I guess I'm wondering about what assumption does this make? Does this assume nothing more from the state? So is this super conservative?
I believe your question will be answered when we go over the budget challenges presentation, if you don't mind. Yes, but yes.
Nothing from the state? Okay. Because, okay.
So the bonds finance the projects mostly, right? So, so the projects that you would see on page 10, that's where the bond proceeds come in. And then the debt service that's related to the bond proceeds on the line for account 400-900-49800, the debt service that you're going to pay back related to those bond issuances is then on page three. So those are your principal and interest payments over time. Or I believe just principal. Oh, it is interest. Okay, so it is, it's principal and interest payment on page three that will be for the totals to finance on page 10.
So P and E, P and I is, I'm sorry, did you say that's number? Is that on number page three?
Page three.
And which line is that?
The total, the, where it says debt service or future debt, that does include principal and interest.
And so besides this added debt cost, this debt service per household, which jumps from $530 to 1800, with the increase, so you know, you're projecting out, I believe?
The increase would come through some of the tax levy, if that's what you're asking.
But we also have some pretty aggressive rate increases. I mean, I was just looking for like the last, last year's long-range financial plan. For example, on page, what is now page 20, Shorewood moves up to number six. Since I've been on the board, that number has been much lower, just as recently as last year. For 2023, we would have, we were number 13. And so that's just another place. I'm just wondering, too, when you talk about these aggressive rate increases, 40%, going to do 40% water rate increase in 2025, these are proposed, 2029, 30%. 2033, 20% plus, I see here, the utility will also need to apply for an annual simplified rate increase. So these are the conventional, right? The conventional rate increase?
Yes, the simplified would be 3% each year. We need to go for the conventional to get more than that.
Okay, so in addition to the 40, the 30, and the 20% increases in the next 10 years, every year, you're going to go for an additional 3%?
That is correct. That would be the plan. And just to note on page 20, that is an estimate of where we would land, so it's not exact yet. And also, some community, some communities have begun raising their rates, but you're not going to see them reflected here yet because they haven't fully gone through the process. So the other communities in the North Shore that are currently raising their rates may come up. So as all of this works out in all of our communities, we may end up closer to number 13 than we are right now.
So does the blue number six on page 20, is that?
It's projected with all the increases as planned in the long-range plan.
So this, what puts us up to number six? Is it because we haven't had our 2025 rate increase of 40% that you're proposing, right? It's already, we're at number six already? Is that what you're saying?
We're at six, but the other communities have begun their rate increases, and they haven't implemented them yet. So once everybody implements the rate increases, where we end up may not be number six after. So it's not comparing apples to apples. So it's not comparing apples to apples a hundred percent?
Sure, because I mean, like, you know, some places have their own water utility, right?
Yeah.
And opposed to, we do our own. I had a question, too, then. In the TID boxes, or the TID pages, the red boxes, those are anticipated close dates, correct?
Yes.
And so considering that since nineteen ninety fat, ninety-five, we had almost the entire commercial district in TIDS, closing that TID, that increment that will be back on the tax rolls, is that built into all these numbers?
There are projections in the tax levy for when the TIDS close on page seven. So on lines twenty-one through twenty-three, you can see there are grayed-out areas where the TIDS begin to close in twenty-seven and on.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Trustee McGovern?
I got a question as well. You mentioned that we're looking at probably a gap of seven hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-five, and that there may be four hundred seventy-five thousand available if we close the parking utility. Is there any additional savings annually or cost if we did that?
So basically, is it a one-time saving?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, thank you for the question. It is definitely a one-time savings. I was trying to think if there is some sort of additional savings, but I don't believe there would be.
Okay.
And does that cost show up someplace else?
So if you close down your utility, you're gonna bring the parking lot basically back into the general fund. So financing future expenses related to the parking lot will become a different issue.
Thank you. Trustee Ursing, trustee Kudo?
This is, this is pretty straightforward to me. Not the greatest. It's straightforward. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Nothing for me at the moment, but you know, great presentation. Thank you for everything you've done to put this together. Really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the approach.
Thank you, trustee Ursing, trustee Stokbrand.
I did have one more question. So we have put on hold alley reconstruction for basically seven years, and I see it starts again in twenty-thirty-one. I thought we were doing the same thing for sidewalks, but I do see it still is in here with forty thousand for a couple of years and then two hundred thousand.
What page are you referencing?
I'm sorry, on page twenty-four. So there's an inventory. I thought we were holding off on both of those while we go through this bubble, which we hope is a bubble, a debt bubble. But I see program, there's still eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the next ten years for sidewalk program costs. If we just, you know, it's, it's a walkable community. I certainly understand the importance of sidewalks. We go from forty thousand, though, then to two hundred thousand every two years.
I believe on page forty, there is some narrative explaining the sidewalk replacement program, which may give you additional thought process behind the numbers. Those costs are just projected for now to keep it in the long-range plan.
And I do see now that it would, you know, the lead, lead service line replacement would obviously impact that.
Thank you very much.
All right, questions from the public? See, I'm not seeing any movement in the in the room. Is there anyone online?
I do have one more. I've seen this many times, future facilities, Village Hall, half a million. Is that our HVAC?
And a procedural or process question, manager, you world. Is there a point at which this board would consider drawing timelines out on any of these land initiatives?
In the next item, which is under special order of business, we go through the twenty-twenty-five budget operational forecast. And in there, there are some high-impact options that we provided for the board's consideration. You don't need to make specific motions on them tonight, but we would like to get an understanding of how the group responds or reflects on them.
But at this point, we wouldn't, for instance, say we're gonna draw out or delay street lighting or anything like that. That would be, we would handle that year by year.
Correct, in how you assess the budget timeline. Pardon me, the
Borrowing.
Borrowing, and the fiscal forecast of that item.
Okay.
In appendix A.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, we can move on to the next item? If that's, I confess that I showed up to the meeting with a laptop and a phone nearly on zero, and so I have a messenger coming with the appropriate accoutrement, if you will. So in the meantime, if anyone can direct us through the agenda, that would be wonderful.
Sure. Item four B is the twenty-twenty operational budget forecast, and Christina Domer is again gonna lead us through that memo.
Thank you very much. And thank you again for your time. So now that we've made our way through our long-range plan, which, as a reminder, is our budget and our target, if you will, into the future, the most immediate target, of course, is taking a look at our most current budget year, which is for twenty-twenty-five. And as I mentioned previously, the common theme is we've got a lot of additional costs to get through from unfunded mandates for infrastructure, from the DNR, lots of previous funding that we had available from fund balance that we used for quote-unquote debt service stabilization is now no longer available. We are seeing the bond interest rates projecting to increase, which is why we've kept our projections at a conservative estimate at the high end of five percent, since we've seen higher percentages being issued for most recent bond issuances that the board has undertaken in twenty-twenty-four, falling between three and a half to five percent in the market. Additionally, we've, I'm sure everyone has gone to the store and seen the increases in prices, and we've seen it here at the village as well. And that is directly from the inflation that we've experienced over the past five years. And we took an average of the past five years of inflation and estimated a four percent increase in our expenditures as a result. So historically, during the long-range planning and projection process, a two percent increase in expenditures was projected. And we believe it is now time to increase that to four percent for the twenty-twenty-five budget to fall in line closer with where we've seen interest rates inflationing over the past few years. So as a result, if we project four percent increase in our budgeted expenditures, but keep our property tax levy at two percent, as you saw in the long-range plan, this would give us a deficit to start with in twenty-twenty-five of seven hundred thousand dollars. The following pages in the budget outlook describe the projects again, and, you know, I'm not gonna belabor you by repeating them. But directly after the projects are described is a really important piece of this presentation, which relates to service capacity, human resources, staff and employee capacity. It's under the title Village Resource Capacity Considerations and Service Considerations, as well as references to the competitive employee marketplace. For those of you that are out working in the market, I don't have to tell you that there's been a shift since twenty-twenty. There's a large amount of additional work and less resources for most people that are out there working. And so staff capacity has become an issue, not just at the village, but overall in our marketplace. And therefore, it's important that we keep in mind when we look at what the costs will be to not only consider what the projects are going to be and what those costs are, but what the costs are to staff time and how we go about maintaining and retaining and obtaining staff that is, you know, at the highest level of quality. And then that segues right into service considerations. Because if we have staff challenges with limited time and efficiency issues due to the amount of workload and projects, we're going to have service considerations since staff would have to be pulled in multiple directions. So I do urge you to consider that not, not only are we looking at costs, but we're looking at the cost of human time as well. So we have various pathways and levers, as I said, that can help us pull the landscape and change that landscape ahead. One of them is, of course, looking at the property tax levy, which due to the expenditure restraint at the state level, we could increase up to eight percent. That would help us with not only the operating, or not only the capital budget that we need to finance, but also the operating budget piece as well. And what's leading us to some of those recommendations, or for you to consider some of these recommendations, is this, you know, what we've seen in the competitive employee marketplace. I really can't highlight enough that without proper financial planning for employee retention, both projects and services at the village will not move forward in the manner that they are planned. You must implement a plan to bring salaries up to market level to remain competitive and at a level of quality required by the community. And we expect this to be higher than the three percent that we have seen in several cases. We've done, you know, we've taken a look at the salaries in light of the current labor market, and many of our salaries, even in some director-level positions, fall short of that. So it's important that we take a new look at this when we are at this crossroads, because we have a really unique chance in this new normal to ride our course and pick a true north that will work for us into the future. There's a lot of wonderful presentation in this that shows you how we have historically composed our revenues and our expenditures, so you can see how that flowed out in the twenty-twenty-four budget. If you look back at previous years, these percentages and breakdowns are very, very similar. I believe going into the future, there may be a new normal when it comes to your budgeted expenditure composition as well. Some of that is going to be because you're gonna issue more debt, so you'll have more other financing sources and those types of things. But you'll also have to consider your services and what those core services look like if we are facing a time where we have limited resources, both human and in the form of revenue and cash. To remind you, and I know I keep saying the same thing, but this is the first time that the village has ever had a look at the landscape this way, which means we don't have a plan, we don't have a playbook, we're just trying to figure it out together in collaboration. So as you start, we start taking a look at this, really, we have to think about triage, right? What is most important? What are our core values? What are our services that we would like to offer? And we know that there's some areas of the village that really need some TLC before others, like the public services, the public works facility, and some of the other planned projects that are already in place. As I mentioned before, another thing impacting us is the expenditure restraint. So even if we wanted to raise our property taxes by more than eight percent, that would be our, our ceiling there because of the expenditure restraint program that the state has that would allow us to get additional state funding, so we don't want to lose that. However, we do urge you to think about going between this two to eight percent as a possibility, or at least thinking about increasing beyond the two percent that we normally had in the past. So how do we do that? Besides just the property taxes, how do we account for the rest of this? Well, in our summary here, we have some low-impact items that we mentioned, and we mentioned those first because these are ideas that have been presented in the past as part of the budget process. But as I mentioned, we're in a new time, and these smaller chips in, in the in the budget would really not help us long-term. So I would urge you instead to consider and spend more time discussing and collaborating with us on the last page of high-impact considerations, which, as we mentioned already, includes the largest one, the parking utility dissolution, which would give us a conservative estimate of four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-five budget to work with. And then another item that we ask you to consider would be to ask village departments to lengthen the service timing of their equipment and vehicles. So if we currently use a vehicle for five to seven years, maybe we change that to eight to ten years as part of our capital improvement plan for our vehicles and equipment. We could also consider looking at the wrong rate, long-range plan and adjusting our timelines for those projects, as well as considering other debt service planning. As I mentioned, we could increase our tax levy up to eight percent. We could also take a look at maybe creating a utility or in some other way, taking your refuse leaf and yard waste planning away from your tax levy, so that those costs could be financed directly by charging the individuals utilizing those services. You could evaluate implementing a wheel tax, which the state would then just charge an additional twenty dollars for those that keep vehicles in your village. And that would, would give you a fiscal impact of estimated one hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. And again, not a large cost to the village because it would be implemented through the state when they collect the vehicle license fees. And we also ask you to consider, or we're gonna look at possibly taking a look at the roadway that goes over your water and sewer utilities for those projects to see if we could take that cost of the project and allocate it out to water and sewer, have that part of the cost covered through the rates. Those are some of the bigger options for being able to really make an impact to the twenty-twenty-five budget process. And so we wanted to summarize those for you. And as an overall summary of where we're headed with the next steps, we've reviewed the, the second quarter budgetary comparisons with staff at the village. And we are now gathering equipment requests and going through the beginning of the budget process after the meeting tonight with the goal of presenting you with twenty-twenty-five budget requests at the village board meeting on September sixteen. That is my summary for what our twenty-twenty-five budget year will look like, and I appreciate your time for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice, who's stepping out, but now I'm charging. So questions from the trustees? Yes, trustee Stokbrand?
Looking at the high-impact considerations, number seven, considering allocating number seven, considering allocating the cost of roadway construction to water and sewer utilities and cover through user charges. How does the PSC care if you start to adjust your accounting like this? If they say, oh, they want to raise all these rates to put in, you know, new water mains, new, you know, they help with the lead service laterals, and now they want to pave the road and charge that back and build that into their user. What does the PSC?
For the rate case, we tell them what the costs will be, that we would like to cover with the addition to the rate case. As far as what can be covered, the PSC makes a determination whether or not it's utility financed or not. But other than that, I don't believe it would affect what their requirements are with the PSC.
It wouldn't affect our application for a 40% increase.
I do not believe it would.
So this is a common thing done by municipalities across the state?
Wouldn't say that. We're in a new normal. We have to cover some financing, you know, taking a look at different ways to do that. It is definitely done, but maybe not as obviously as you would think, right? Because it comes down to the allocation of the project, which then depends on what the village does for their bond issuances.
And so I guess I would say, how would I decide between increasing water rates or adding a wheel tax? I believe we all pay a wheel tax right now in Milwaukee County, am I right? Twenty dollars. Does Tosa, is there anybody else who has a wheel tax? Is it Milwaukee? It doesn't matter. I know we all pay one right now to the county, right? I personally can't see increasing, if we increase the tax levy eight percent, what if the school district went up eight percent, M A T C five, M M S D? That's a pretty big ask. Can we adjust the timeline a little bit? I do have to say, you know, when we were talking with the real estate representative, there was just very briefly mentioned, what about, instead of buying land for the Public Works facility, would we consider leasing it? So, I mean, I guess, you know, it'd be good to know all the options and see how they pencil out. But I know, you know, the 2025 budget time is upon us, so. We did have a brief discussion about parking meters, I know at one time. That would come up on the list with our previous finance director. And I guess the thing is, you do have to spend money to make money there. I did point out, though, that we will be repainting, I believe, Oakland and Capitol both in 2026. So if you want to restripe for parking meters. Thing about parking meters is, like Downer and Silver Spring, people who are coming to our village for our restaurants and our retail and our stores would help pay for our roads. And so while I'm not really excited about parking meters, I do like that it spreads the cost to people who want to come to Shorewood and use, you know, our streets. I'd be interested in getting some feedback from the bid.
Thank you for that. We did not include the parking meters because we do not have an estimate of what the cost would be to implement. That is why it's not on the list. However, I do acknowledge there could be savings. We just don't know if they would outweigh the cost currently. I also want to say, picking off the list, that idea, I guess to backtrack, I think this will be a multi-faceted approach from our standpoint, to go back and understanding what your frame of mind is as a board for which of these solutions you prefer us to look into. But I don't believe one of the solutions will give us the results for a balanced budget right off the bat.
And I did want some clarity. The unfunded mandate is the lead service laterals, correct? It's not the water mains? Water mains is something we're deciding to do on our own, is that correct?
Right, yes. But because of the efficiency of how the projects have to be done, we are choosing to, but we kind of, it's like a rock and a hard place.
Right. And I guess the other question, I'm sorry, back to the long-range financial plan. So we were thinking 15 years for lead service laterals and the water mains, and this only goes out 10 years.
Right.
So you're budgeting, what you're showing here, there would be more costs beyond this, right? So when I add up my lead service laterals and my mains here, and I get 48 million, that's 66%, right?
Yes, and that's why we'll have to go for three percent every year for the foreseeable future.
Going back to the high-impact considerations, can you walk us through item number five, consideration of refuse leaf and yard waste planning to foster financial sustainability? It doesn't have a fiscal impact, I'm assuming it could vary widely.
Yes.
But do you have any guardrails on that one?
Are we aware of about what it costs? About half a million? For the cost of us to have these collections occur in the village? That would be my estimate, I guess, loosely. Just based on looking at various things. But what it would mean is, instead of property taxes covering your collections for leaves and other lawn items, you would create a utility and then charge people for that.
Everyone would get charged or you'd be charged?
It would be if you used it.
And that's, the state still allows us to create that type of utility, obviously? I thought the state took away our ability to create utilities.
Well, it's not an official.
I'm not questioning you, but.
No, I know.
Wasn't it a sewer utility or some, there was some utility that?
Stormwater, you might be thinking of.
Yeah, storm.
But you don't necessarily have to create a separate fund for it, like a utility, like your parking fund. You're just going to start charging people.
It's a user fee.
That's right.
I mean, when I'm looking at the high-impact considerations, it's hard to get, I mean, yes, these are for 2025, but I'm assuming that they would continue on through additional years.
Oh, definitely.
Not including a parking utility. But just a general understanding of what sort of savings we would be looking at annually would be helpful.
I think refuse is probably the largest one that would give you an annual impact.
And that's somewhere around half a million.
Very high-level estimate on that.
All right, again, I'm just, as I'm trying to put the puzzle pieces together.
Right.
You look at it.
It's difficult to know the exact cost because we do it in-house, right? So we'd have to take a portion of what Public Works does.
We'd be able to look at that and get back to you. Would it be similar to the exercise we went through the last time we negotiated our contract and went to RFP, Director Books, like, remember that exercise that the board did? Was it 2018 or something where we looked at outsourcing basically rather than in-house? But that was different because it was just a different way of providing the service, but it would still have been tax levy to pay for it.
It may give us an idea of the cost that we could see.
Which is now six years old or something like that.
Again, I'm just trying to, you know, when looking at the high-impact considerations, it's hard to judge when they don't have fiscal impacts. I get it, I mean, it's, you can't have the exact.
I believe that one would be the biggest annual impact because the one that comes closer, closest to it would be the wheel tax of 150 a year.
Depending on what years you're talking about, it could potentially be capital equipment, right? When we're talking about.
That's right.
Dump trucks.
Yes, yes. If people delay their replacements, it's difficult to know exactly what those amounts would be, but it would give you room in your budget each year if you change that policy.
Okay. Just so long as we all understand things. Okay, thank you. This is fantastic.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Any more questions? Trustee Ursing?
Nothing at the moment, thank you.
I have, with the scenario of that our, the highest we could raise our taxes at eight percent, not that I'm saying that I'm recommending that, but that's the scenario that we have this year. Does that mean we use up? What I'm trying to get at is, in the past, because we've under-levied, we sort of, I had this idea that we had like reserve levy, you know, is that?
Not really.
Not really?
But you can levy up to a certain amount, so that's presented in L R P. But I didn't point it out because it's many millions more than you've levied. So there is a max levy that's calculated each year, but that would be even greater than the eight percent increase. I didn't go over it. But it doesn't give you any reserves necessarily into the future, it's just that you could keep increasing it up until that amount. And as you increase your debt service that you're levying for, the amount you can levy will increase as a result. So building in these costs will increase your levy anyway, or the amount you can levy.
So what I was getting at is, the capacity to levy at eight percent this year doesn't mean that we don't have a similar capacity in future years.
That's correct. The only thing that would limit that capacity is if you had issues with your assessed values, if we had another housing market crash, and we had decreases in our assessed values, then you'd have a decrease in your levy. Other than that, I don't foresee that as a possible future outcome.
Okay. And then, basically, these, what we call like high-impact actions, I mean, they're really policy decisions, in a sense.
That's right.
So it's like, you can come up with revenue by using property tax levy or moving things off the levy into user fee categories, you know, way, shape, or form. And once you, once a board takes that action, it's not like you have a wheel tax one year and you don't have the wheel tax the next year.
That's right.
Okay. And then my final question is, with looking at a $700,000 deficit, just going into budget season, is the, how much does staff, with the next step, next step being staff coming with department budgets that reflect cuts? Or is that 700,000? Are we so lean already that there's really, like, anything, any reduction attempts to reduce that deficit at the front end with budgeting would result in an immediate decrease to service? I don't know if I asked that the right way.
I believe I know what you're asking. I think just cuts will not cut it.
Right, because they're one-time savings anyway, so they never work.
It will have to be an overall, you know, look with us and an overhaul. But I think cuts will have to be a part of it. We're assuming four percent increase in expenditures. So what you keep, you're going to see a four percent or more increase, right? So I think we have to be prepared for some cuts because $700,000 is a lot. And when you, you know, it's a target. So it could be more than that when reality shakes out. So to be conservative, I would want to start with some cuts and then see what we can do with the revenue side. You can always go back and add expenses back, but we should start with a budget that's going to be balanced, and that will definitely include cuts.
So another way of looking at it is, if we're projecting a four percent increase because that's what the trends have told us with inflation, that really, a zero percent levy increase is a four percent levy increase because that's all, that's what you have to do to even keep the status quo in terms of services.
Right, and to compound that, we haven't increased over the past few years.
To keep up with inflation.
We've used our fund balance as that debt stabilization, and that's helped carry us. But if we don't do anything to either decrease our expenses by cutting or increase our revenues by doing some of these options, we're not going to be able to right the ship.
Wow, this is the board that gets all the fun jobs. I mean, it really, this is really significant. So I really appreciate it too, I'll echo my colleagues. And it is your exact, I mean, it really is the crossroads. And that's a really hard place to be in as a board because there's no way to get out of it looking good. And if, unless you really think that you really love policy decisions that get things going in the right direction, you know? If that really excites you, this will be really great. But otherwise, it's very painful to try to figure that out.
Big decisions.
Trustee Stokbein.
I do want to say that, as tough as it is, nobody's basement is flooded. I mean, you know, we do not have emergency triage, although the Public Works has leaks. But I was not on the board at the time, but 2010 here was extremely ugly. So I think everybody should remember this time now in that context. What I wanted to ask about, though, was in terms of pay. So if you say you're seeing three percent, it's got to be a three percent pay increase, a COLA, just to keep up with the North Shore. I believe when we did a survey of the employees, the things that mattered the most to them were pay and flexibility with scheduling. And so I'm just wondering, where health insurance, you know, the increasing, I don't see it here, but I know one of the other things on a different page was, it was considered a small part, was increasing a co-pay perhaps. It sounds like we don't want to, we want to, you know, you would not recommend cuts in pay, but I'm wondering if we could ask for a higher co-pay on health insurance as something that?
I believe at a time where you're considering what you want to do to retain and bring in high-quality employees to the village, that might be a mismatch in your policy.
It depends on what the insurance rates come in at.
We just began looking at those, so we can take a look and get back to you on what we're projecting for the rate increases for the insurance piece, to see what kind of impact a co-pay could do. But we could definitely consider that as part of the process.
I mean, I guess I'd wonder too, if everybody else is looking at the same situation that we are. Other municipalities may also be looking at, instead of going to a 10 to 12 percent, co-pay going to 15. And I don't see, we did talk very briefly about, okay, if we would consider a refuse utility, though, we do not want to start, like, outsourcing our water, our water system, like I know other communities do. On this list of services, I do see other municipalities have a stormwater fee. We're not able to do that because of our combined system, is it?
We actually reflect our stormwater improvements within the sewer utility already. So, whereas in some communities, they deal with them separately, we have combined them into that one utility.
So for other municipalities, especially ones that are surrounding us, are they in, we know if they're in similar, we assume they're in similar fiscal positions as us, or?
Two items to note. We are ahead of the curve on lead service line replacement and our research and review of that. We are because we decided to go and address the southeastern area of the village in the sewer. So initially, I mean, if you think back in time, when that project was approved and the board in 2020 or 21 said, we want to finish that southeast area, it was a sewer project, right? So at the time, we're looking at what to do with the sewer. Then we see coming down the pike what, you know, we only, for decades, people have ever contemplated, which is the EPA now requiring lead service line replacement.
And then what compounds is, so we take a look at those projects, we proactively implement an LSL program, um, which we've successfully implemented and are proceeding with. But then add into the conversation that, oh, guess what? Our municipality, we developed, you know, majority, I would say 85% of our water main is constructed between, you know, this 1920 and 1941 time period, where the pipe is such, you know, we have a, a display down actually in, in the lobby, where the pipe itself is at risk of crumbling, because if you put new service lines into that, it, it's just a weak pipe to begin with. And so what we're at risk at, because when they implemented water lines that long ago, they didn't always necessarily put in, um, frequent valve stops. So you could shut down a portion of main without having to shut down mass areas of roadway. That, or sometimes the valves don't turn as well as we would like them to, because they were put in the ground decades ago. So, our community is unique in the fact that while the EPA and a number of other communities may have more updated water main that can handle going into there, the smallest cost for us is a lesser, lead service line replacement. It's the smallest cost. It's the water main and the road reconstruction that goes over that in order to put it back in, in appropriate way. Very similar to how in the southeast area, when, you know, we deferred maintenance on a number of those roads for a period of time, because we thought, well, we're gonna come back to this area at one point, and when we do, we're gonna have to appropriately fix the stormwater to drain appropriately, so it's not always undercutting the road surface. So, um, all different communities will approach LSL in a certain manner. For us, it's a little different, and you'll, you'll see that within my memo when we talk about the water, um, rate case study. That's great that the PSC wants us to do conventional rate increases and only look at those every two years. I, I think that we need to have a different discussion, which is what's palatable over the course of time, because the cost on this, not having additional funds from either the federal government or the state coming through, the communities like ours, I don't find it very palatable to, to reconstruct that in, infrastructure in a 15-year time period, particularly when the age of a water main, you know, I mean, essentially it's redoing that infrastructure in the village. So you couple that with the perspective that, you know, you know, two years ago, we didn't think that we would have taken on or estimated out the entire replacement cost of a streetlight system, right? So that was another... 13 million.
It's perfect at 24, so.
You kind of comes out of nowhere. And again, you know, Shorewood created itself as a village because they wanted those services, right? That's why our community actually formed. People petitioned because they wanted to have streetlights on their side of Edgewood, or they wanted to have sidewalks that were paved and roads that were paved and the infrastructure that accommodated for it. Well, we're just at this point in time where those things are coming due. And for us, they're kind of compounded in, in anything that we've left, let go, I would say, for that 75-year period. Um, and those are the, those are the projects you see on the list. They're not wants. They're, they're needs if we need to comply with that EPA mandate, and we need to, and we're at the infancy, right? I mean, they're requiring a plan by 2027. I think we need to go back and we really need to, um, and that is something else you'll see within the scope of, um, tonight. We really need to take a more detailed look on, okay, what roads make sense? How do we need to evaluate that infrastructure? Does the whole line need to be replaced? Can we line it, can we not? And just put it through a litmus test of criteria, so that we can get a better handle on, on where we need to go. And that's the next step in the process. We've done the first step, and I really commend the board and the staff for really leaning into, okay, if we had to estimate what that lead service line cost would be, here's what it is, round number, right, 44 million. But now we got it, and we've spread that out in your long-range plan, and even increments, starting in 2026 and moving forward. But now we need to go to the next step and say, okay, now that we know what we know, let's break this down and really get detailed about what areas need to come first and what criteria they need to have, because they all have cost benefits associated with them. And if I'm a general member of the, if I'm the public, I want to have an understanding that the methodology about how we're gonna approach that, what the DNRs will require is a 15-year, I think we're gonna be well beyond that, but that's just my guess. And I'm not a betting person, by the way. I'm just saying, we're really at the beginning, um, of that discussion. But as a community, you have been incredibly proactive in having it. The improvements that you made in the southeast area to accomplish more with that, those, that sewer project was needed, because it's only gonna get more expensive, it all had to get done. And if not, you would have been just digging into a new road and then negating the surface, um, and going back to do it later. So the decisions that the, the group has been making are sound decisions. It's just that you compress that into a small piece of time, and it's like reconstructing the village.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I ask is because, one, I mean, I think, I mean, I agree that there's been a lot accomplished in the last few years, right? I mean, there are a lot of bills that came due. My concern is that, you know, with, with all the increases, the increases that I see Stokbrand described, M A T C, the school district, sewer, I mean, all of it, right? And sometimes, single-digit percentage increases, sometimes not. You know, what keeps me up at night is sort of the, the village as a whole, is the juice worth the squeeze? Live here, right? I mean, is it, is it to be, going to become so obscenely expensive to live in the village of Shorewood? Because we have to do all this stuff, or because we're choosing to do all this stuff in such a compressed amount of time? Are we going to force out seniors who are fixed income? Are we gonna not allow younger families in? Um, and that doesn't even begin to describe affordable housing, right? So, I look at all this, and you know, I, yes, I look at the 2025, or we go until 2034, but it's like, we're just sort of caretakers for a short amount of time here. And I want to make sure that Shorewood is still the village that it was when we got here. But these numbers are scary, like, these are huge increases on a, on a not very large population. And even if we tried to increase the size of the population, they would still be large increases, right? Even if we added housing units, these would still be huge increases. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that when we're going through all this and we talk about what has to be done versus what we want to be done, that, you know, we're willing to sort of parse out. I mean, we're not gonna get everything we want. And I think as a board, we have to recognize that, that things aren't gonna get done necessarily when we want them to get done. Because I don't want to make Shorewood a place where people don't want to move here, because it just isn't worth it, right? The taxes are too high, the fees are too high, um, the schools, I mean, I just, that's my concern. And so when I look at all this and I look at the high-impact considerations, it gets us some places, but it doesn't get us there, right? And the low-end impact don't get us there at all. So that's, I mean, I just want us to be cognizant as a board of, yes, there's a lot we're working on, yes, there's a lot we're doing, yes, there's a lot that has to get done. But there are still a lot of people who live here, who, you know, barely living here, or would like to live here, and making Shorewood completely unaffordable for everybody should be a concern for all of us. So, that's where I'll end that.
I just had one more thing I wanted to mention. So I know in the past, Public Works, for example, has been very good about looking for ways technology could help reduce manpower cost, because obviously, um, in spite of all this infrastructure, people are very expensive. For example, we have the water meters, I believe that they're remotely red now. I, that I believe is a reduction in either contractors who were doing it, or staff who was doing it. Um, we use some of our COVID money to buy, uh, vacuum trucks that would pick up leaves with one person instead of having to hire another person. And so I would just like to say, I hope as, I would like to see this continue in all the departments. If there's some way we can get technology and not hire people, that's, uh, we need to keep going down that road, because, you know, you keep hearing about robotics and AI and things that are supposed to help us save money, and we could sure use that right now.
Thanks. I have a couple of thoughts. Did you have anything? Okay. Couple of thoughts. In terms of, trustee Kuro, I agree with you. And I think it's a logical question to say, are we the only village, you know, municipality dealing with this? And I think there's another way that we can kind of parse that out too, as an exercise. I guess my, after being at the ICC, there are ways that we're different in the age of our infrastructure, and our density and all that. But I also think that we're being affected by things, because we're actually looking at things. I think there are a lot of municipalities that aren't having this conversation yet, for whatever reasons. And so it, it's gonna catch up really fast. Everyone's gonna be affected by four percent inflation if they acknowledge that they're, if they are adjusting for inflation, that four percent is true for everybody. Maybe they use a different number, maybe it's three percent, maybe, maybe they hope it's two percent, but they're not right, you know? There are some municipalities that don't have financial plans, they don't have long-range plans. So again, none of these issues come up, it's not because they don't exist, it's because they don't come up in their public meetings, or they don't want to think about those things. So that's one way of kind of thinking about this, um, that we could go through and look at some of the increasing costs. And you could kind of zero out, like, everybody's gonna be affected about that. We might not hear about it, it might be perceived as different. We did do a major, um, sewer facilities plan and upgrade, at the same time that other municipalities were getting flooded directly north. And they didn't do that, you know? Yes, we have a combined system, other municipalities don't, except for Milwaukee, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm really glad that you raised that question, because I think that helps us start to think about, yes, what can we not avoid, and then what are we choosing to do versus absolutely needing to do? And then I have a question around, I saw, um, that line, and I think trustee Stokbrand mentioned it, about the three percent North Shore market increase. Is that for COLA, or is that actually market adjustment, and then COLA would be on top of that?
That was only, that was just COLA.
That's what I would have thought, yeah. That's just COLA. When we took a look at the salaries at the village overall, you know, the, the three percent is low.
Yeah.
If we start looking at phasing people in to where they need to be.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm getting, so, in my mind, where I hear that is salary adjustment.
Right.
And so, are you looking, are you proposing that salary adjustment is gonna be part? I mean, obviously, we have to budget for it, but is it happening at the same time as our?
We need to plan for it, it's good.
Well, and that's the other thing I can say from being at the ICC. I mean, there are major staff turnovers all the time. I mean, it's a finance director here, it's a city manager here, it's a public works director here. And I don't know if it's the retirement aging, if it's like market shifts, or people's moving out of the business, or whatever it is, but literally every elected official at every meeting, not every elected, but at every meeting, I should say, there are announcements looking for major staff replacements. So anyway, trustee Stokbrand.
I just wanted to go over a couple of things that, I attended a webinar sponsored by the Wisconsin League of Municipalities last week, and I think I mentioned to, um, Kristin and Dave and Rebecca last week. One of them, they talked at one, it was about budget and finance 101, and then it was also about debt. And, uh, it was made clear to us, those of us attending, that, um, stability is good for taxpayers and for bonding. So, you know, if we've been going two percent like this, to go to eight would be bad, both for the taxpayers and for the bonding agencies. But if we were perhaps to go from two to four, and then threes or something like that, I mean, just to visually show you, um, they had us up on the PowerPoint about that. So stability is good for taxpayers and residents, we don't like peaks and valleys. It's not something you can plan, it does not exactly show good governance and management. And, uh, the other thing I did at the end of it, I couldn't help myself, and I said something like, "We really are facing astonishing infrastructure costs, and we want to continue to pay our employees well." And someone very quickly chimed in and said, "You are not alone." And the league, of course, indicated they were going to work the lobby for us. So, um, to your point, it sounds like it's endemic.
And that's not even looking at the municipalities who went to referendum for, um, uh, re, yeah, for operating.
Just operations.
Yeah, so that's not even talking about those municipalities that are already at that point, where they can't, they don't have the tax base even to levy.
I said, you have plenty of tax base to levy on. I do agree, you don't want to fluctuate too much. So you have between two and eight percent. We're not suggesting it has to be the eight, or it has to be the two. Somewhere in the middle, if we take a look at these other projects or possibilities that we could implement at the same time, I think it needs to be a collaborative process with opponents to it.
Yeah, that seems like it's, the, it's all about blow, but it's, it's sort of like in investments and portfolios, you want to diversify. That's a, kind of an analogy.
That's right. Diversify our options, so that, as you said, not only are we correcting the issues, but we're doing it in such a manner that we're not just changing all of the policies, right? We can stay the same village we've been, but maybe tweak a larger policy in favor of the budget, and then we can use the property taxes as the remainder for now. We don't have to solve everything in 2025, we have four years of this projected out. 2025, we're looking at $700,000 as the immediate issue. And then, once we fix that, it will project out a better future 10 years already. So, I think each year, we have to chip away at this.
Thank you. Trustee Stokbrand?
That's the thing that's kind of frustrating is, um, so if we get the new streetlights and they're the LED, are we, you know, you would hope our electricity costs would go down, right? I mean, you know, and we've got the water meters, you know, all new water meters that Public Works did wonderfully during COVID. You know, it would just be nice if you could somehow see all those things help you save money. It's just, um, what it is.
Yeah, it's the same with, um, tids when they close, it's like, it's not like people get a refund check in the mail, because all the other costs have gone up too. But it would be worse if you didn't have that increase. So that's another way of portraying it, but it's hard, it's a hard story to tell.
All right, any questions from the public? Yes, you could.
Mitch, you'd need to come up to the microphone and just say your name and address, um, and then share the comment.
Hi, I am Mitchell Hopping, my address is 4512 North Larkin Street. Just to something that I think Kathy asked earlier, it sounds like 25 municipalities in Wisconsin have wheel taxes, including like Appleton and Madison, Milwaukee. That's, that's about where we're sitting on that. The other part of it was when you were talking, um, Rebecca, when you were talking about the, um, costs that were involved with replacing the sewer lines. When the streets are being removed, is that like the curbs being torn out as well, or is that just like the streets?
In, in those particular projects, um, the second phase, which is going on down, or the curbs have been removed.
Okay.
In those particular projects, but with the other water main that would need to get replaced and the lead service line replaced, I think we need to do a more detailed review of those roadways to see what really would make up the cost for those particular projects to get done.
Would there be any possibility of saving money if, when we went to put those streets back in, they were dramatically more narrow, or is there any, like, is that any way of saving money? It's just like to not build as much street?
Well, there's a lot of policy considerations.
Yeah. I'm pausing, it's not that I don't want to answer, but there's...
I'm pausing. It's not that I don't want to answer, but there's a number of different factors. There's type of road that it is, type of traffic that it carries, what pedestrian accommodations are there, would be there, where parking is accommodated for. We're a community with 53% tenant-based. And so our on-street parking, as we've seen with the overnight parking permit and that large shift from how we used to administer parking has changed and allowed people to park in the area of which they live. So there's a number of things that play, yeah.
I was just wondering if, when we're talking about these different ways of trying to keep the village affordable for people, that, that is a thing that we spend money on, that maybe we can find ways to spend less on?
Appreciate it.
I know a group of people who would love to propose that for capital drive right now, a little road diet.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
I appreciate that, yeah. All right, any other comments? All right, we are at 9 o'clock and it's for special order of business. Shall we close this item? Do you have what you need from us? It was an update, right, overview, okay. Well, we'll await next steps or next requests from staff for our guidance and, and action. Moving on to the consent agenda, item 5, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee McGovern, all those in, oh, any discussion?
I'd like to pull, C is in CAD and E is in Dana.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exceptions of 5C and 5D, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Moving on to item 6, items removed from the consent agenda, 5C, consider regular village board meeting minutes, June 17th, 2024. Trustee Stokbrand.
I had communicated with clerk Carol just to see a few things added there for closure for some sentences. And so if we could just have those brought back at the next meeting and then...
Would you like to defer these minutes?
Please. I move to defer.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion by, to defer by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. 5D, consider agreement for 2024-2025 LSRR project engineering and inspection. Trustee Stokbrand.
I just was looking for some information about, we would then go out for bids on this, correct? So this is just the first step, that they'll get it ready for us, and then, so it's July right now. And I, do we think we're going to try to get some of this done this year? Like, we don't have enough going on.
No. Next year's no better one.
You, you may recall that spent some time. We, we discussed the creation of a standalone private service line replacement program when we determined that we would not do private lead service lines under the, the Phase 2 contract because of the bid cost that the contractor submitted, which was significantly higher than what we saw last year. So we, we discussed approving this new standalone program to cover the services that would have been replaced under the work that's going on in Downer now. And then also adding existing properties where they are served by a public copper service, but a private lead service to increase the overall project size, to make it more attractive to contractors. And we, at the time that we had that conversation with you, we also had the conversation with some contractors out there who indicated to us that they thought this would be ideal winter work and would be very interested in doing that. So our intent was to bid this project late this fall and probably give them a start date of December 1st or so. And then look to, to do that work over the winter, finishing up in the spring. We do have some reserve water identified funding from the bond issue for the Phase 2 project. But in order to complete that work, we will need funding from the, the planned bond issue in '24. So we're trying to be very, very careful and very deliberate, but deliberate about how we schedule this project to ensure that all necessary funding is available to us when we need it.
And then, isn't, like, the biggest part of this is contacting all of those residents?
Yeah.
And so will that fall on the eventual person, company that gets the bid? We're letting them do that?
Yes, that is how we have structured the last, the last time, projects that we've done were involved, the contractor getting in the house to replace the service. They're responsible for that scheduling and coordination.
Thank you. I move then to approve the 2024-2025 lead service replacement project engineering and inspection.
Again.
Motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That completes item number 6. Item 7, public hearings, we have none this evening. Item 8, citizens to be heard. This is an item that is for matters not on the agenda. Are there any citizens who would like to be heard this evening, either in person or virtually? All right, I see no movement in the room or online, so I'll close that item and move on to item 9, new business. 9A, consider agreement for water utility conventional rate case. This comes to us from manager Ewell.
I already started talking a little bit about this, but we are, we need to apply to the PSC for conventional rate increase. I'd like to start the process now with City Water, because we'd like to have some additional conversation regarding spreading rates out over the next three years versus having a significant increase at one time based upon our community's particular needs and the interest, the amount of infrastructure that we have in front of us, which includes that water main component. So the agreement before you is in agreement with City Water, who we work with for those reasons, to make that application to the PSC and then allows us to start that discussion.
I can make it.
Thank you.
I move to approve the agreement with City Water for water utility convention case in the amount of $7,000.
Second.
Right, motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Stokbrand, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 9B, consider 2025 CC Phase 2A lining program lateral impact policy.
So as we've discussed and as you see in your, your LRP schedule, we have Phase 2A of the Southeast Area Combined Sewer Project scheduled for next year. That includes large pipe combined sewer lining. When I say large, we're, it's diameters of 54 to 66 inches. You know, because you award the contracts, that we regularly do sewer lining. We do that for two reasons typically. It's either to reduce inflow or it's to provide some structural integrity to the pipe. In this case, this is all about structural integrity. We have never done lining of this size. And it is different than the smaller pipelining. In, in those cases, you have, you line manhole to manhole, which is a distance typically of not more than 400 feet. And that work can be done with service reestablished in under a working day. So it's an inconvenience to residents who can use very limited amounts of water. But by the end of the day, everything's back in service, things are good. In this case, that 400-foot run will typically take 36 to 48 hours. So not nearly the same level of inconvenience to residents. Milwaukee, the other municipality in the area that has combined pipe, when they do large sewer lining, they have a program where they award vouchers to residents of the dwellings that are impacted. That, that's, there are different schedules that you can come up with costs, but essentially the voucher is to cover the cost of a hotel room for those evenings. So that is an option that we are presenting to you. There really are three options. I mean, one, one option would be to give residents plenty of advanced notice so they can make their own plans. That isn't really an option that I am recommending. Another option is the voucher system where we would still give residents ample advanced notice. Let them know that they are going to be receiving this voucher, make plans for these days, you will not be able to use water, you know, et cetera. A third option would be to install what is called a cleanout. So it's actually installing a temporary, like a standpipe on their, that attaches to their lateral. It allows them to use water that would be placed on the lateral between the main and the home. And that would give us an access point where the contractor could actually pump that flow and set up temporary pumps at each property. And that flow would then be directed to a downstream manhole of the area that we're doing the work. That does not come without cost, so we estimate the cost to do that at each property. To do that and then restore would be just over $3,000. We are talking about each.
Per property?
Each. Yeah.
Hundred.
So, so it's 37, I think I said 37 properties, 54 dwelling units. So under that option, it's 37 times 3,000, which, good math, $112,000.
It's in the notes, not good math.
Okay, well, you can take the credit. Under the voucher option, we're looking at, as I mentioned, Milwaukee's policy right now puts that payment per night between 2 and $300. So if you assume, you know, I think we used a 566 number based on a, a existing schedule put out by the federal government, we'd be looking at 54 dwelling units at that amount, just over $30,000. Or zero. But again, that's not an option that staff is recommending.
So as a, as a resident, what am I able to use for that 36 to, I, I have no access to water, no access to flushing?
So you can...
It's just a sewer, so like...
Right, so you're, you know, a lateral, you're, you're typically talking a sewer lateral, depending on whether you're long side or short side, where the, the sewer is. You probably have 40 to 60 feet of storage capacity.
Okay.
So you could flush a number of times without any issues or concerns. I wouldn't suggest showering, I certainly wouldn't suggest dishes or laundry. But you can use minimal water. Water won't be shut off. The issue is having a place for it to go. So that lateral can store some water. It's difficult to tell residents exactly how much, you know, how many times it's safe to flush, but you can do it a few times over the course of the day. It stores the water. But...
What happens?
If they exceed the allowable number of times?
Right.
Well, someone in the basement will know.
So there'll be...
There'll be backup.
Oh, yeah. It'll come up through the floor drain.
Yeah, no, we don't want to get anywhere near that.
Is there any good news?
Right. No, I had it all stacked.
Like, what the?
Tonight's the night. Arndorfer and Lynn knew it. So they beat it out of it.
The good news is that we are investing in our infrastructure.
Oh, okay.
I think the voucher option is, now I remember where I got the phone call when I was reading the packet last night and was like, got distracted.
There was a... No, good.
So would your department have to handle these vouchers?
You know, the way the city structures the contract is they put that in the contract and that is part of the contractor's responsibility, and then it just becomes a pay item. So they'll, they'll verify that they handed out 37 vouchers at $600 each. And then, and I'm assuming these vouchers come in the form of a, like a prepaid MasterCard or, or something like that. And so then the contractor would front that, and they'd make a pay request and the village would reimburse.
Is there any, are there any, for Milwaukee, were there any required stayed-in hotels?
Nope.
You could just apply for the voucher instead?
If you want to dry two days, yeah, or, yeah, or I mean, you, you could also stay with relatives or friends somewhere else. I mean, I think,
More of an inconvenience.
It's more of a, a recognition of the inconvenience, but priced at a level which would allow you to get accommodations.
And a pre.
Could we budget for this?
It, my understanding is it would be part of the, the bond issue that would cover the project costs.
Supposed to happen how soon?
Uh, next year. But we intend, it would be our intent to bid this work either late this year or very early next year. I, I, my preference would be to bid it this year for next year. The contractors who can do this type of work are fairly limited. So I, I would really like to get on there, be one of the first on their schedule for 2025 work so that we can have more say in the time of year that it's scheduled.
Would there be other projects coming up where we'd have to do the same kind of thing?
I don't anticipate that to be the case. We have a relatively small percentage of our system is pipe of this size. The, the other large segments of pipe this size are all in Edgewood and Maryland and Stratford, and we have already replaced most of that. And so there's very little lining of pipe this size that would remain.
We talk liability for a second, so if, if we do option A or B, do nothing or voucher, there are. Property owner that's responsible for that is us, I mean, we're, you know, my real analysis, if we do nothing or we do voucher, people stay at home, flush, and there are backups, is that going to end up costing us more than? That's right.
Yeah.
So I mean, so if there are backups and people, if, if we're doing the work and there are backups in basement, right? Because folks, it, they didn't, they took the voucher, they're, they're staying home and they're still using the facilities.
Even though we've told them not to use water.
Do we have any liability that, if there are backups in a bunch of basements, is that, is that our problem? Is that homeowner's? Okay.
Yeah, the insurer would likely not allow, I mean, I'm just hypothetical, but not allow that claim because notice that has been provided and the fact that it wasn't caused by the municipality's doing.
Sure.
Right? So if you're going to have that backup come back into your home, you've obviously been utilizing the service. And that, those are two of the key things that they look at.
Okay. Again, I just want to make sure that, you know, we'd probably be, 112 isn't a drop in the bucket just getting sued by.
And I can, just because I'd like to be...
Sure, this comes up all the time, so yeah.
Clear about it. I, I would also follow, I will follow up with them to make sure we have that appropriate response.
Wouldn't it be the vendor's responsibility to contact each homeowner and say, "We're going to do this, here's your card"? So wouldn't it be the vendor's responsibility to contact each homeowner and say, we're going to do this, here's your card?
That, that is the way we run our programs now. It's the, it's the contractor's responsibility. I think in this particular case, I would do, I would probably look at, at recommending that we do two contacts from the village with these individuals. My first would be when we have a contract in place with the vendor contractor and they give us an estimated schedule. I would reach out to the impacted residents and.
By mail.
By mail and state that this work is planned and it is tentatively scheduled for this time and this is how this is going to work. And say, you know, you will be getting this, you, you, you know, we're recommending that you make plans to vacate your, your household during this time. And then as the project approaches, I would send a reminder slash, we've solidified these dates. These are the dates that you will not have sewer service available. You'll be getting this voucher and this is how we're going to get you. So that'd be what I recommend at this point.
Then because of the, the apartment.
There are, there is an eight family and a six family that are impacted or that are, you know, that are served by this line.
I just want to make sure that if we go that route, sending notice, since we're not sending just a problem. We're sending to addresses.
Yep, that we typically do that on our projects.
I assumed as much.
Notices go to, if it's, if our records indicate that it's not owner occupied, one is sent to the property owner by name, another is sent to occupant at the address.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move that the C-Ski Phase 2A lining project includes the funding of vouchers for residents impacted by the sewer service outage at an estimated cost of over $30,000. I further direct staff to develop a written policy detailing the award of vouchers for future village board consideration.
I'll second.
All right, trustee Stokbrand, motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion? Trustee McGovern, trustee Ursink?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. I do think this is the best course of action and so I appreciate the motion and I will be voting yes. So hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Well done. That's a first for me, the voucher.
But it's a last.
First for sure, you've never done it before.
All right.
Why not?
Seems very modern.
We're flush with cash, whatever.
Consider task order for structural analysis of Public Works Warehouse Building. This comes to us from the village manager's office, direct manager Ewol.
So included in your packet is a cost from Strand to do the structural analysis on the Public Works Warehouse Building and the amount of $18,400. We're recommending that that be taken from ARPA funds and it's coming to you for consideration at this time.
All right, questions from the trustees? Comments or emotion?
I'm just wondering, I mean, this is, the deterioration on that corner seems severe. I mean, what kind of general building is each year? Our facilities? I know Justin's out and about, but this doesn't seem like something that just happened overnight, that this has been between the crack in that wall and what's happened with the degradation, that this has been a prolonged issue. So I'm wondering how often we're taking a look at our infrastructure, sure that, you know, we're addressing these things a little bit sooner or, you know, we perhaps could have caught this or.
I don't know if Public Works has a different response, so if so, feel free to chime in. When I had first, when I came to the village, 2017, then 2018, I had asked for a review to be conducted of our facilities because my understanding is that we did not necessarily conduct reviews on our own facilities, similar to how we do with other commercial businesses that have occupancy permits. At that time, those reports got done. One of the most immediate issues was here at Village Hall. We didn't have an operable fire alarm system. That was necessarily the code, so we kind of.
Right.
I don't recall off the top of my head what that report said with regards to the warehouse building, but Justin has been in it recently, which resulted in this comment. But I, I would have to defer to you, Leon, if there's been any other type of routine inspection. From my understanding, that there, there has not in years past, other than that report.
I, I, I'm not certain. I haven't seen a report. I know Justin and I talk regularly about the condition of the annex building.
Right.
Because honestly, that was the one I was a little more concerned about at the point.
Yeah.
But Dan tells me that a prior building inspector, he was aware of regular inspections by Mr. Henson. But I'm, I don't know what, what regularity they're being done now.
Okay, and maybe this is a, it's a question about capacity for Director Grupentruck, but, you know, I mean, we have a certain stock of buildings that we are tasked to maintain. I just want to make sure that if we possess the ability and Justin has the time and capacity that we're actually inspecting our own stuff to make sure that this doesn't, something like this is caught on the front end and maybe there's nothing you could have done, I don't know. But this just seems like a, a nice warning to serve to us that, you know, maybe we need to implement a more robust of our facilities.
Sure, you know, one of the things that we did do, if you'll recall, for that third-party perspective and a more forward-looking cost, is that we did the facility conditions needs assessment, which is not to be confused with the work that Barry Antos did. But if you'll recall that we went through a period of time where we had UWM graduate study, look at this, say, hey, Sherwood, you got a problem, you got to make some decisions with regards to your facility. That triggered us to conduct the facility condition assessment that FGMA performed. They outlined, you know, kind of like the 20-year perspective of here's the status of your facilities, here are the improvements that you're going to need to tackle over that period of time. The long, short of that story is, hey, you need to make a decision on your facility because you're either going to need to start investing a significant amount of money or make other decisions. Then that resulted in hiring Barry Antos to take a look at our current facility needs, what an updated facility would need because our spatial constraints, you know, we're not horse and buggy anymore and incinerator. So, you know, what would that future look like? Which then resulted us to, literally tonight, where, you know, we're proposing to have Colliers take a look at that site and then where we could potentially relocate either the transfer station or the facility.
So I mean, I'm, I think that's great and I totally understand how this got here. But, you know, is there something we can do proactively, policy-wise?
Oh, sure, and I'm happy to touch base with Director Grupentruck. I'm, I apologize if I belabor the answer to the question.
No, no, that's fine.
I just wanted to kind of get that perspective of how we got here. Because I, this group has been working on it. It's been one of the things that, to be quite honest, during my first three years here, if there was not a palate that would have been receptive to investing in facilities.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying invest. I'm just saying we should know whether we should invest.
Sure.
And that seems to be the question here, you know, it's like sort of a, it's a thing like a pound of prevention or whatever it is.
Yeah, yes.
An ounce of prevention? Pound of cure, right, what trustee Stokbrand said.
I'd be happy to touch base with the building inspector on that and we can come back to you with a report.
I, or a conversation, I.
No, there's a few, because I think the point that you're making is really well taken. And it just has not been one that we have, have been as proactive over the history of our community, right, in doing. So I take that really seriously. And to your point, if we're not doing it, let's start doing it and then let's have those discussions fold into what we review on an annual basis.
Especially with the financial.
Absolutely.
There are things we need to sort of address.
I think it's a great point, thank you.
Oh, hearing that, oh, trustee.
That's a segue to my question. So $18,400 for a structural analysis of a building that we don't know what we're going to do with. It just, it seems high and I understand that, you know, 10,000 is what we usually do for a, going out for bids. If you spend 18,000 for a structural analysis and then the fix is 40 to $50,000, I don't know. And then you're up to 75 grand. It just, it seems high. But I don't know anything about engineering, so I guess we don't want to go out for bids because we don't have the capacity or what. Seems to me a lot of money for a structural analysis of a building that is not even, I mean, it's a, it's a warehouse, right? So, I mean, it's not like you're going to check the HVAC and the plumbing, are you?
I mean, I get it, I understand what you're saying. I think my concern is, is not the warehouse or the stuff and it's staff going in and out of it. And the people that are in that building, I want to make sure that the building is structurally safe for
Right.
people to enter it.
I mean, is, is the building worth $18,000? Anyway.
Cream city brick might be. But that's about it.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I was just going to add just one last thing, you know, we're going to be under a lot of pressure to delay a lot of stuff. And, you know, here we have, you know, one of the downsides of delaying is you end up spending a lot of money on just trying to keep a building from falling in on employees or the equipment that's in there. And it's, I don't, I don't really like, you know, having to spend 18,000 on a building we're probably going to demolish at some point, not too far off from now. But it's, like trustee Kudo said, I think it's a, it's an issue for workplace safety and, you know, we shouldn't have raccoons living in a building where we've got this expensive equipment and we should just keep this in mind when we, when we're looking at some of these big ticket items. And I know the DPW site, there was, I believe, three studies over the last 20 years saying that it's got to be replaced. And I just think some of these things are going to be inevitable when you delay these, you know, long-term projects that need to be fixed.
Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, motion to approve the, the request for 18,000 for an engineering study of the building.
Is there a second?
Uh, I'll second it.
All right, motion by trustee McGovern, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion? I agree with everything that's been said. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next uplifting item. We have considered task orders for Public Works site assessment. Although this is forward movement.
Forward movement. So included in your packet is a scope and estimated feed to review our current Public Works site evaluation. And this is needed for a couple of reasons. Number one, we need to have a really good understanding of our environmental review and how that could impact site development. Number two, I'm going to be coming back to you in September with quotes to proceed with an ALTA survey to determine the exact location of the retaining wall and any associated easements and then the legal, and from the title search, which Nathan, I'm going to ask you to, I'll over to Chicago Title.